Meeting will be recorded for broadcast on the internet after the meeting has taken place and can be viewed online at the council's YouTube website. Generally, the public gallery is not filmed, but by entering the meeting room and using the public seating area, you're consenting to being filmed. All recordings will be undertaken in accordance with the council's standing orders. In addition to myself and any other councillors who have decided to join the meeting, and there's a few of us, a number of senior officers, together with legal, service-based and democratic services colleagues are also in attendance, either online or in civic. Can I ask anyone who has joined us online to switch off their microphone and camera when not speaking? Please, and for those in the room, please ensure you turn on your microphone when you do speak, otherwise you won't be heard. A supply of the papers for this meeting is available on the modern.gov pages of the council's website. I've received notification of one member of the public who's registered to speak. I've not been advised in advance that any councillors have registered to speak, but for any councillors who have joined the meeting, please let me know if you wish to speak at the relevant time. And can I remind councillors and members of the public that any contribution should not exceed three minutes? The decision sheet will be published on the modern.gov pages of the council's website tomorrow, Wednesday, the 13th of August, 2025. Please note that this decision was subject to pre-decision scrutiny and therefore cannot be called in. The decision hasn't changed, except in response to feedback from the committee. I'll now take the item. So we have the, we are, we are asking that the accessible summary document attached as an annex to the report be approved to proceed to a public engagement exercise to seek stakeholder views on the policies in the draft of the, in the draft local transport plan. So we've already made the decision to go out and get consultation feedback on the plan. We had some really fantastic engagement through the scrutiny process and we were asked to make some additions through that process. We have made those additions. I think some of the things to really call out here are that we have included some information about how the parking revenue is reinvested into transport schemes. We've included the car cruising and car meets in the travelling safety section. And there's a section on rail which was suggested by the scrutiny committee that's been added. Safety on the redway network for vulnerable user groups and exploring the franchising of public transport and move towards zero emission public transport, which were already covered in the summary, but the wording's been adjusted, which will emphasise them, which I think is really important. I was very impressed with the engagement at scrutiny and I thought we got some really valuable things from that process that were able to make this document even stronger. Would you like to speak, Murray or Graham? I'm sure Murray, you would like to add to that.
I'm not sure I have too much to add, actually. I think you've covered everything. We went to scrutiny and we have incorporated the recommendations from the scrutiny committee into the revised consultation draft, so I think, I think we're good.
I stole, I stole all of your words, sorry. Graham, would you like to add anything?
Nothing from me, other than to say, you know, I think it's a fairly rough draft document. As you said, it's, it's gone through a fairly strong, rigorous scrutiny process. Now it's time for it to go out to public consultation and why the stakeholder group get feedback. And we also just for information held a meeting session with parish councils last week, which was also equally well received and I think that will then take a strong part in the consultation process as well.
Thanks, thanks very much, Graham. And I think it actually should be noted, a huge amount of work has gone into the document more generally and into making sure that all of that feedback is listened to, understood and incorporated back in. And I'm very grateful to the transport team for doing that. Victor? I'm really sorry, one second. And do I have any councillors who would like to speak? Right, okay. Sorry, sorry. Alan, would you like to speak? Sorry, apologies.
Right, yes, I thought it was normal that the public went first. Alan Francis, Milton Keynes Green Party. Camera's not working, so I'm hearing sound only, I'm afraid, today. I'm not going to make any comment tonight on the content, because obviously I'll do that as part of the consultation process, but only on the process. Tonight's delegate decision proposes a consultation on the draft summary of LTP5. Now, I think that the draft full LTP5 should be available as part of the consultation. As the saying goes, the devil is in the detail, and I think we, the public needs to see the detail as well. When I raised the issue of incomplete documents at the June full council meeting, the leader said, and this is a quote from the minutes of the June council meeting, "With regard to the amount of information provided for scrutiny by environment and place making of the LTP, this was a matter for the scrutiny committee", and further noted that, and this is the important bit, "The full plan would go out for a 12-week public consultation, with the final decision to be taken by the council with the provision for public speaking on that item." That's end of quote. Now, tonight's DD proposes to early consult on the summary LTP5. That is contrary to the leader's statement at full council just a couple of months ago. If the full LTP5 is not published until it appears on the agenda for full council in November, or whenever it might be, there will be no opportunity for people to influence its content. We all know that once a report appears for approval at cabinet or full council, it will be approved without any changes. So it's essential for openness and good governance and for fulfilling the leader's promises that the draft of the full LTP5 is made available as part of this consultation process. By all means, consult on the summary, that's obviously a more accessible version, more accessible to the public, but also make available the full LTP5 for those who want to see the detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Francis. Murray?
Thank you for that. I wasn't aware that had been said at full council, actually, so that is news to me. The reason that we have decided not to consult on the full document is largely a practical one, in that I suspect making the document available might result in perhaps only you reading it, Alan, in that it is quite a large and technical document, and it's certainly not something that we would put out to the public to expect meaningful views on, I think, because it is a bit of a tome to work your way through. It also, by necessity, because it goes to DFT, has a whole lot of sort of background or current baseline information in it, a lot of graphs and things like that, which, again, are not particularly accessible. I have no particular issue with making the LTP5 available. That, that is something we could have as a document that could be downloaded or something as part of the consultation, but I wouldn't want it to be the consultation document. I think I want to be quite firm about that, because I, I don't think the LTP would generate the same meaningful feedback than the summary document will, which is much more accessible, much more concise and summarises things in a, in what I've tried to make a readable and digestible way. But as I say, I have, I have no particular issue with making the bigger document available as some PDF file that people can download and look at if they wish, but I wouldn't want comments to be made on that draft, really, because the policies are all in the summary document.
Thanks, thank you, Murray. I think I'd echo that. What we do want is meaningful engagement, and this is a technical document. It is a document that is meant to be going, as Murray said, to the DFT. There's nothing being hidden. We're not trying to sneak anything through. It's, it's a high-level strategic document, so I'm not sure what we would be trying to sneak through in a high-level strategic document that would be in the detail. We will look at ways to make the document available to people who might want to read it and might want to feedback on it. Thank you very much. Alan? Councillor Cannon, would you like to ask something?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, really. The, I didn't see much about taxis, so hackneys or minicabs, which I think are part of the transport mix. We use quite a lot of Milton Keynes. And also, there wasn't a lot of aspiration for accessibility in this document. I'm sure it is part of our, what we want to do. And the other thing is concessionary fares. I didn't see mention of concessionary fares. Those are three points, really.
Thank you very much. Would you like to comment, Murray?
Yes, well, first of all, public transport does include taxis. We haven't said an awful lot about taxi policies, because, well, taxi policies are kind of set for us. We do have the ability to take a different approach to our regulation, and we could take a different approach to the number of Wolverhampton registered vehicles, for example. These are all the sorts of things that are in the mix. But you're right, there isn't anything specifically about taxi policies, because they're not so much policies, they're more how we, how we enforce our existing regulatory capabilities, I suppose. In terms of accessibility, I mean, I would take issue with what you've said. I do think there is quite a lot about accessibility in the document, not only accessibility on the transport network and the fact that we have 20% of people who find it difficult to get around Milton Keynes. We need to make our system more accessible, but at a more sort of immediate accessibility level, we have a programme, obviously, of improving or of delivering access improvements, dropped kerbs and other things of that sort. But there is a specific section about accessibility on the redway walking and cycling network and about how, although they are good for people in wheelchairs and with mobility, scooters and other things, there are some gradients that are very challenging on the gradway network. There are some surfaces that are quite challenging for people who are using mobility aids. So I think there is a fair section in there about how we want to make our transport network for all modes more accessible in the broadest sense of the word accessibility. When it comes to concessionary travel, we haven't spoken specifically about the sorts or the actual services that we would be, be supporting, but what we have talked about is that very different franchising approach to the delivery of public transport services and the way in which they are delivered. So rather than individual subsidies being given to individual operators, bus franchising will give us the opportunity to look at cross-subsidy in the round, looking at all of our services, which gives us the opportunity to make that subsidy go further, if you like. At the moment, cross-subsidy is not permitted under the deregulated bus environment, but under, as a franchising authority where we actually have control of all of those bus services and take all of the fair revenue, we can then decide what we want to subsidise and what we deliver as a social service, as opposed to a financially beneficial service. But ultimately, we have to make all those decisions with the finances of running that bus service in our minds, because ultimately we will be on the hook for all of the costs of all of the services that we dictate should be operated. So although we get all the fair revenue, if that fair revenue does not cover the cost of those services, then we will still have to subsidise. So while I haven't talked specifically about subsidising bus services, there is, you know, it is covered in that franchising section. In relation to concessionary fares, we have recently made some changes to the concessionary arrangements for MK Connect, for example, to bring in a sort of token charge, if you like. And I think realistically, we will have to maintain some kind of low concessionary charge, particularly going forward with the financial risk that franchising may bring. Now, what we've found from the MK Connect, the introduction of the, of the concessionary fare charge of £1.50, what we've found is that it has had very little impact on the ridership of MK Connect. And in fact, our demand-responsive service is dealing with as many people as it did before. So no one appears to have been deterred from using the service by the introduction of the nominal fee for concessionary fares. So I think that's probably an example or a lesson to be learned, that there is a small amount that people can pay towards their public transport as a concessionary fare, which makes it easier for us to operate the service in the round, because the amount of subsidy that we have to put into concessionary fares is obviously lessened. Now, I appreciate, in an ideal world, concessionary fares should be free, but realistically, in the financial environment that we're in, that is extremely challenging. So we have to look at ways in which we can address that whilst hopefully not deterring any essential trips. And we think we may have found that sweet spot now in that our introduction of that charge hasn't had too much of an impact on our ridership.
Can I, do you mind if I just add a little bit to that, just around the concessionary fares piece? I think going into detail about what concessionary fares will look like in a strategic document like this probably isn't that helpful. So I think what Murray is saying about the franchising model and the kind of, the fact that that is the direction of travel that we would like to go in, and that is where our focus is, and not committing ourselves to anything on concessionary fares is our way of making it possible for us to, to deliver that in the best way possible for residents. Does that make sense? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it just may be worth a sentence or so to say that, yeah. And on the accessibility thing, it wasn't just kind of the redway and pedestrian accessibility, it was also accessibility for the different modes of transport as well.
In terms of our, in terms of our bus offer, our new contract in MK Connect has significantly increased both the number of zero emission vehicles that we have, but also the number of accessible vehicles that we have operating. So there's a number of Peugeot partners now with their rear, rear sort of lifts on them. So we, we have certainly made some strides in terms of the improving, the accessibility of MK Connect. In terms of moving forward with our franchised public transport services potentially, we have the ability to specify exactly everything we want: type of vehicle, low floor height, step-free access, ramp deployment. That becomes within our gift as the specifier of the authority, of the services, rather, as the authority. So we have that within our control to make that accessibility much better in future years. And certainly in terms of our MRT system that we're looking at, that is completely fully accessible with completely low floor and level boarding. So we are moving towards that, but under our existing sort of exist, operations with existing bus operators, we are quite limited in what we can force them to do, whereas under a franchising environment, we have all the cards.
Yeah, I was just really thinking about the aspiration would be something useful for putting in this document.
Well, absolutely. I mean, I, I hope that the aspiration is that our transport system is to be fully accessible, but if that is not clear, then I need to, I need to make sure that it is. Thanks.
It's really helpful feedback, thank you. Councillor Hopkins?
Thank you very much indeed. And like Alan Francis, I'm not going to ask any specific points, because that's the whole point of the consultation, is to look at the detail. Again, it's, it's process, and I'm always grateful to Alan, because he always raises one of two things. I was given to believe that this consultation will be for eight weeks, but Alan quoted that the leader of the council quoted that it was going to be for 12 weeks. And as that's on public record, I suggest it ought to now be for 12 weeks. And will be helpful as well to the likes of parish councils, because as you stated earlier, if the consultation starts in early September, that will give us the September, October and November rounds of parish council meetings to discuss and therefore format a detailed response. And so that, that would be very useful if it was 12 weeks rather than eight weeks. The other thing as well, having been here an awfully long time and seen quite a few transport policies come and go, they are by very nature aspirational. And I'm sure I'd go back to the 1990s and read that the transport policy which aspired towards trams and, and pods and various other, fantastic. And of course, they always lead then to a sense of intense disappointment at the end of them, because nothing really fundamentally changes. People are still basically in their cars, driving backwards and forwards around Milton Keynes, because that's what it was designed for, and public transport is always an issue. And though we aspire to make it much more of a accessible and sustainable solution, it never is. This time, I really do hope that it is. And I think your presentation to the parishes last week certainly set that out. The bottom line of all of this, of course, is funding. And if, and you presented two things last week. One is that the fact that our network is decaying and therefore requires an awful lot of funding to bring it back up to scratch, because it's 60 years old and, and in some cases more. But at the same time, you're aspiring towards all kinds of different solutions, all kinds of different networks, et cetera. And 106 and tariff monies can't pay for everything, as well as education and such, just, you know, all the good, all the good things that the expanding city has. So there has to be a sense of realism. So aspirational it needs to be, I'd be disappointed if it wasn't. My other question is, this council also aspires towards a directly elected mayor regionalism. And my understanding is that there are two major sets of policies that that directly elected mayor would hold. One is strategic planning and the other is strategic transport planning. So where does this then sit? Do you think in a couple of years' time, when you have a directly elected mayor for Betisheer and Milton Keynes, effectively, you have Thames Valley Police and Betisheer Police with conflicting views on how road safety should be adhered to and enforced? And you have differing political views on how to deliver and what the priorities of that delivery likely to be. So where will this document, do you think, sit in two years' time when we move towards this directly elected mayor model?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a very good question. And what you've presented there is the challenges of any combined authority as it comes together, because there will be a whole bunch of different disparate policies across the regional area that have to be harmonised in some way. I wouldn't like to say that we are the lead in any potential combined authority that emerges, but certainly in terms of population and relative hierarchical importance of settlement, I think we are probably at the top of our combined authority region, I would say, in terms of a hierarchical sense. And we have had a tendency to take more of a sub-regional approach to some of our transport solutions than some of our neighbours have. I think also there will be a role to play for England's economic heartland as well, to be that sub-regional body that tries to, not corral, that wouldn't be the right word, but certainly to homogenise the strategies across the, the city region. How it would actually pan out, I'm not sure, because obviously the politics of the entire area will change significantly and there may be, you know, certain aspects of this document that is, that is not, you know, well-received by some of the external authorities. I would be surprised if that were the case, actually, because I think it's a fairly standard, not when I say standard, it's a non-controversial document, I think, in a lot of ways, and it sets a series of quite realistic and laudable aspirations, I think, for how our city should develop. However, I mean, clearly we will take on a, a regional public transport planning and operating responsibility under a combined authority and a city mayor. And that in itself would require a considerable pivot in our existing skill sets as a local authority. Adele's public transport team are fabulous, but they could not run an entire bus network. That is skill we would need to build up over time. So I think that journey to franchising is one that we are exploring very closely now. We've commissioned some detailed consultancy work into that, what that journey to franchising would look like for us as an authority, what sort of things we would need to take on, what sort of skills we would need to develop, what sort of risks are involved, all of these things which are part of our decision-making process. So I think, you know, it's, it is a bit of a journey into the unknown for a lot of us as officers in terms of how things are going to pan out. But certainly the ability to take control of our public transport operations is something that is very appealing to us and I think is a, a potential solution to some of the public transport challenges that Milton Keynes has had, more or less, since it was conceived. But I can't give you a detailed answer as to how exactly our strategy is going to fit in that regional environment, because obviously, you know, Central Beds and Luton and various other folk will have their transport strategies too. I do think there's a significant amount of overlap and I do think we're all on the same page and we have regular meetings as, as practitioners in this area through England's economic heartland, and we also meet regularly with our public, our transport professionals in neighbouring authorities. So I speak to my equivalent in Bucks and Central Beds relatively regularly, more regularly the Bucks version, I have to say. But, but yes, as I say, that's a, that's a journey into the unknown, so I can't quite tell you what that's going to be like. In terms of your other point about the consultation period, I am perfectly fine with an open-ended consultation. It's a non-statutory consultation, so extending it from eight to 12 weeks or even beyond that is, is not any big deal, really. It will be live on the commonplace platform. We'll probably also drop paper copies into parish council offices for people who aren't potentially online, so they can come in and look at a physical document. But yes, I have no issue with extending that consultation and aligning with what the leader has already said at council.
I think it's important that we do, when you make the decision this evening, that you make it clear it's going to be 12 weeks rather than eight weeks.
Okay, we'll do that.
You will do.
We will add the 12, we'll, we'll add that we will be extending the decision and I will have to come back and sign tomorrow. Yeah. So it means that I think the implication of that will be that the decision won't be published tomorrow. It will be published at a later date, once I've signed the amended decision. But I'm, I'm perfectly happy. I think the longer the consultation runs, the more chance we've got of getting more feedback and the better quality feedback that will be. And as I said, there's nothing to hide here. This is about, this is about getting the right decision and the right strategy. And I'm, I think it was interesting what you said about historical transport plans. You know, I remember my first transport plan as a councillor. This feels a bit different to me.
Yes, I mean, I think- That was the point I was trying to make, actually. Murray is a breath of fresh air, but he may not be here forever and it just needs to be carried through and, and, you know, dare I say, you and I come and go. Then maybe somebody else sitting there with a different view of the world, but that's, we have to, we have to deal with the realities of today. And can I say, I think wise heads on young shoulders is exactly what you're typifying here. Thank you very much indeed for agreeing to extend it. I think it's very sensible. My other point was, was based very much around funding. And there's a lot in here, both in terms of repairs and maintenance to bring it back up to scratch, and then investment into the future. I'm not entirely clear where all that money's going to come from over a long period of time, but I'm sure we can aspire to a better financial settlement.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, you know, there is an indicative delivery plan in there. It's not fully costed and funded and secured. That's, that's not what DFT are asking for, because they would, they would be pretty flimsy documents if it was all secured funding. So, so that's very much a case of us working our way through it. It'll be a mixture of- It'll be a mixture of government funding. We expect our, our, um, integrated transport block funding to increase. We've been given notification from government that we'll get a three-year settlement, which allows us to do better planning. We've also asked central government as an exceptional item for the funding of our MRT system. So there are discussions that are happening with various government bodies to try and pull all this funding package together. But I do appreciate it that, uh, you know, everything in there, we don't have the money for at the moment. But, uh, one of my jobs, one of my numerous jobs, is to try and get as much money for these things as we possibly can.
Councillor Banks or Councillor Trendle who would like to speak more?
Thanks, Jenny. I, I share David's concern about, um, the Strategic Authority. And I suppose, as I read through it, I was hoping to see more consideration given to it. Uh, and I'm, I am concerned, I must be honest, that we are spending money now, planning, and then consulting on something which we will do. When I'm sure we all know full well in this room, the new Strategic Authority will be here long before we do a lot of this, including MRT. MRT is years ahead. The Strategic Authority is a couple of years ahead. Um, and I, I wonder if we are wisely spending our spare cash um, to do something which we won't be doing. We will have a part to play, but it'll be under the control of whoever controls the Strategic Authority and the mayor. So that's my concern about that. Just on the, the other thing, as Black Macaulay got two points, I'm going to say the word that we don't want to hear in any meeting about transport and roads is potholes, but I'm going to use that as shorthand for road defects generally. Um, the document is quite long on aspiration, uh, but quite short on any numbers that anyone could pin on and know when their roads will be better. And they are deteriorating. We all know they are. And we know why they are. They're all built at the same time, bloody blah. One has to question why they were built, because there are lots of other places that were built at the same time where their roads aren't deteriorating as quickly as we are. And it would be nice if some of the contractors were still around to ask, but they're not, so we can't. Um, but we do need to make commitment. I believe as a council, we need to make commitments as to numbers. Um, and we need to actually fulfil the promise. Otherwise, in both these cases, both about what we're consulting on and the bright new future and about things like potholes, we are just going to raise expectation to promptly kick it off a cliff edge at some stage in the future when the money runs out or the plan doesn't come to fruition. And everyone's seen that before, particularly when it comes to transportation, perhaps more so there than anywhere else. Um, because it's probably one of the hardest things to do, so it's more likely to have a problem. Um, but I think we do need to be a bit firm about what we'll do and say, if, you know, if we do this, this is what the outcome looks like. Not quite, this is what the outcome might be, you know, please God and the river don't rise. Um, and, and those concerns about that is that raising of expectation. If you tell people it's going to be difficult, by and large, they're pretty sensible and they'll know it'll be difficult. But if you raise that expectation, they'll just say, a bunch of politicians made us a load of promises, never kept them. And I don't want anyone in this room to have to have that conversation with anyone who votes for them. Um, those are my two points on that one. Um, nothing I'm asking you to do. I'm just asking you to think about some stuff. Thanks.
Well, no, thank you for that, Councillor Trendle. Do you want to?
Yeah, I just, there's a couple of things there that I really want to pull out. Um, and then Murray, you, you can go into more of the detail. My understanding of this is a statutory document, so we have to do it. And it has to be about Milton Keynes, because that is the situation we are in now. And we can't, I mean, we could do some nods towards a future strategic authority, but we can't speak within, we, we don't even know, I mean, I think we do know what that strategic authority is going to be, but we don't know that strategic authority. So, so anything we say would just be a guess, a guess. Uh, we could maybe think about, I, I think it's not a bad idea to include it and we could talk about kind of how we would work with them or, um. But, um, I, I think that's why we have, had, we have to do this. This isn't a choice. This is, this is, this is a statutory document. The other thing I would say is it's a strategic document, so a statutory document that is strategic. I don't know why we would bring in numbers to a strategic document. And, and, and I definitely don't think we should be talking about potholes in a strategic document. Talking about road defects and repairing roads, fine, but I'm not really prepared to talk about when we're going to fix potholes. And, and, and you talk about our roads, we do a lot of repairs on our roads. Frequently, our roads are in a better state than a lot of other places. And they're in a better state than other places built at the same time. So I'm not really sure where that comment comes from.
It probably comes from the fact I drive about hundred and fifty miles around my ward every week. Uh, and I see the same potholes there sometimes for months. So just to cut, to chat, just to catch a couple of things. We've all written documents in our careers that we have to write for some reason. Either because it's going to go to a statutory authority or because the MD woke up that morning and knows he wants the document. We've all written those. And we all know if it's never ever going to come to fruition, that dictates how much time and energy and therefore cost you put into it. So producing the Mona Lisa to hang in a downstairs toilet would not be a good use of time or money. And again, you know, we haven't got a lot of that and we need to spend it on a lot of things. We need to be a bit more sensible about that. I do not believe that we cannot give a number in a strategy. Our strategy is to have good roads and people who vote for us want to know what a good road looks like. And they're sick to death of getting the suspension fixed whilst we tell them that we're fixing loads. They need to see numbers. If we can't give a number in our strategy, we're not giving them anything at all. Our strategy is to fix, and you don't mind, by the way, saying that we've fixed thirty five thousand square metres of potholes, and that's three asters in Bletchley. So we don't mind kicking numbers around when we think it might look good. If we can do that, we need to commit to what good looks like, because our strategy should be good. And if we're saying it's good, we tell them what good looks like. That's where a good strategy document comes from. That's what a good strategy document looks like.
Yeah, well, thanks, Councillor Trendle. I mean, if I can just come back on that. I mean, I would suggest that the LTP five is a kind of overarching strategy document, which has a number of detailed documents sitting underneath it. One of those documents would be our parking strategy, which is made reference. So I've not talked about how much our parking is going to be in this strategic document. That is something for the parking strategy to deal with and have its own consultation on. Similarly, Graham, you might want to jump in here. But I would have thought that our maintenance plans and our resurfacing programme is an annual report, a, a, a summary or a target document in terms of what we intend to do. And again, that would sit underneath the LTP as a, as a more detailed document, looking at one particular area of the LTP. Um, on the subject of timing of MRT and things like that, um, I think I have to tell you that MRT could well appear before a combined authority, because we have already spoken to the New Towns Task Force about funding for the scheme. And potentially we might get a funding decision as soon as September, which means that we could be building things on the ground early next year to deliver our MRT system before our combined authority has been formulated. So some of the things, although, you know, I, I realise that there have been pods and, you know, all sorts of sort of fantasy projects presented in previous times. But I think everything in here is, everything in the LTP five is very tangible, very real and very close. Um, I talk about in the document, using potentially autonomous vehicles to operate MK Connect services in the future. That's what our trial outside on midsummer is all about. It's evaluating that vehicle's ability to drive through a mixed traffic stream without a driver. So, as I say, it is aspirational, but it's not fantasy. It's, it's very real. All of these things that are in this document are actually happening, we think. And therefore, I would hope it's a bit less aspirational and a bit more real than some of the previous documents that have come before. Um, I have something else written down, but I can't actually read my own writing. Infrastructure it was. Yeah, so Graham, do you want to jump in here?
Yeah, so I've been listening to all the points, all the members have made, um, all very valid, I think. Uh, Alan's point around, um, document, yes, I think that's very sensible to have it accessible in some way. But I agree, it probably shouldn't be part of the main consultation. Um, going for the twelve weeks, uh, for the consultation period, again, very sensible. Uh, we want as many people and as much feedback as possible.
Right, Graham, sorry, your microphone isn't very clear. Are you, have you got like headphones or something? It's cutting in and out. You're muted.
Hear me now? Yeah?
Better, yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I agree that we should do the twelve weeks to want as much feedback and meaningful, uh, consultation as possible. Um, I would, uh, say that it is not really for officers to comment about combined authority, as at this time. We don't know anything about it. We don't have any input to it at this point. And as Murray has said, we are required to produce a document now. It will affect or does currently affect like near term, um, bids and grants and DFT, so we have to have it in place. And we've tried to make it as real, um, deliverable as possible in the near term. But at the same time, it is a strategic aspirational document, so we can't particularly get into detail in terms of costs of concessions or numbers of potholes. That is not what the document is designed to do. Murray has said, those things are dealt annually by the corresponding plan and strategy for the year and for that piece of work. And that, and that goes for funding streams as well, which are both local and government departmental funding in year. So we may have a bit more of a scare when we have a three-year funding settlement. We don't currently have that right now, so this document is our best about a strategic direction the authority would want to go in. I'll leave that now.
Yeah, and the other point I was just wanted to make was the one that you made about infrastructure. And I, I think we are quite unique in that regard, actually, Councillor Trendle, in that, um, there are very few places where everything was built more or less exactly the same time. So, I mean, it's not a roads issue as per se. It's more to do with structures, more to do with bridges and culverts and underpasses and things. Um, so, uh, so, yeah, I mean, I, I don't mean to alarm everyone by saying, you know, everything's going to crumble and fall apart all, you know, overnight one day in the future. And that's certainly not the case. But I just wanted to flag that it is a concern that we have and we are planning for that infrastructure renewal when it comes along in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years.
We'll, we'll do our very best to do that, but, uh, we have a structures expert who's testing these bridges on a daily basis, so I'm sure we all know. Thanks.
Right. Thank you very, very much for the input there. Obviously, no, um, I will not be making the decision this evening. I'm amending the decision to make it very clear that we're extending the consultation from the stated eight weeks to twelve weeks. As suggested, I think that's a really good idea and it won't impact upon any of the other timelines that we need to keep to, so that's fine. Um, thank you very much for your time. Um, I'm going to close this meeting at eighteen fifty nine. Thank you very much.